All right, can we bring this meeting to order for the Town of Rising Sun Town Council for March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen? Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Braun.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Present.
Vice Mayor Arthur Reith.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all with the exception of the mayor are in attendance.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, in place of the prayer the mayor usually does, what I'd like to do tonight is recognize during a moment of silence, the passing of Senator Wayne Norman. Calvin has put together a really nice collage of pictures of the senator and our District Thirty-Five team. Here's a great picture of the chief and the senator. I got to know Senator Norman pretty well, wish I got to know him better, leaving in such a short time. We attended his funeral Friday and the viewing last Thursday, very large turnout, as you saw from the paper. He was a great friend to the Town of Rising Sun and to Cecil County. He was always here for the Sunfest Parade, and he along with Delegate Kevin Hornberger and Delegate Theresa Riley were always here for us. As you'll see through these pictures, there's pictures of the chief, there's pictures of Commissioner Warnock, Commissioner myself, all the way back, I think there was a good picture of George Walker in there from Sunfest. There's my favorite picture of him. He just became a grandfather this past summer, so that's a tragic loss, you don't get to spend time with those grandchildren. One thing that really struck me and stuck in my mind about Senator Norman was when we announced last year the Rails to Trails program and the acquisition of the property, he read the article in the paper, and one day I got a phone call from Annapolis and almost didn't answer. I thought it was probably a telemarketer, but it turned out to be his office calling to say, you know, the senator read the article, he's a big train buff, he thinks it's a great idea what we're doing, and said, "Let me know what I can do to help." We didn't have to reach out to him, he reached out to us, and that showed me the type of politician and man that Senator Norman was. Like I said, he was always here for us. The District Thirty-Five A team made up of him and Kevin Hornberger and Theresa Riley. We're in good hands. There's a big vacancy with the senator being gone now, but we have a lot of faith in delegates Hornberger and Riley, and I think they had a great mentor there to bring them along. So Calvin will leave these pictures up for a little while, and please keep his family in your prayers, your thoughts. He was a, he was not a politician, he was a man of the people. He loved what he did as a lawyer, as a delegate, as a senator, and they said he was a great party thrower, too. Everybody talked about his Fourth of July parties. So we have some great pictures up here, so could we recognize a moment of silence for Senator Wayne Norman and his family, please? Okay, moving on, we have some reports on some executive sessions, Calvin.
The first one is, at the last meeting, I had mentioned this report, but we didn't have it completed, and this is the report of an executive session that was held on February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. It started at three o'clock on the second floor of Town Hall. The meeting, a motion to open the meeting was made by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Warnock. Commissioners Pauline Braun, Commissioner Pearson, Commissioner Warnock, and Marion were present for the meeting. A motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Pearson. The reason for the meeting was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were the Chester Waterline Project. The persons in attendance were water project attorney Mike Klein, town engineer Ryan Flickinger, and the town administrator Calvin A. Bodenberger, Jr. There were no action items taken at the meeting. A motion was made by Commissioner Braun, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to seal the minutes of the meeting. That motion passed three to zero. A motion was made by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to leave executive session. That motion passed three to zero. A motion was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Pearson, to adjourn the meeting. That motion passed three to zero, and the meeting was adjourned at five oh five P. M. The second executive session report is for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. The meeting started at seven forty-six P. M. on the second floor of Town Hall. All of the elected officials were present. A motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Arthur Reith, seconded by Commissioner Warnock. That vote passed four to zero. The reason for the meeting was to discuss personnel. Persons in attendance at the meeting other than the elected body was Calvin A. Bodenberger, Jr., town administrator. There were no action items. A motion was made by Commissioner Braun, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to leave executive session. That motion passed four to zero. A motion was made by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to adjourn the meeting. That motion passed four to zero, and the meeting was adjourned at nine twenty P. M.
Is that, I don't, okay, any public presentations tonight? Business meeting items, the comprehensive plan draft?
Commissioner Braun, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, the planning commission has completed the amendments to the comprehensive plan and has forwarded copy to each of the commissioners for their review. It will then be forwarded to the Maryland Clearing House for their review. I would make a motion at this time to, for the board to agree that this plan should be sent to the American Clearing House for their review at this time. In the event there's any other changes you'd like to make, we could still make them during this sixty-day period while the Maryland Clearing House is looking at it, so.
So, or second? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. So we'll go ahead and send our comp plan draft off to the Clearing House for Maryland, Department of Planning. Good work on that.
Thank you.
It's a lot of reading, but a lot of good changes. We have any citizens input? I don't see anybody's name on the list tonight, but anybody want to have anything they want to add? Tom, good to see you again. Okay, well, moving on, staff reports, chief?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, commissioners. For the period, the last two weeks period, we had a hundred and forty-nine calls for service. The most notable was on March sixth at approximately ten P. M. One lone male smashed a window in the Star Gas Mart. He went inside and stole cash from a vending machine. We're working with Star Mart to get some images out to the public. Soon as I get those, I will have them for the press and social media. The training of Officer Thompson is underway. So far, he is doing, doing okay. It's going to be an adjustment because he's coming from a neighboring state that is a little different than Maryland, and he's going to have to absorb some of the changes, but I think he will be fine. In addition, the weapons transition for the officers took place, it's complete. The officers are happy now that they can utilize their weapons at night, or at least see them at night, because before, the night sights were starting to die on many of them. Now they feel a little bit reassured about having those night sights on the weapons. In addition, their annual training is starting. If you don't know, most, mostly you probably don't know this, but officers do have to go in-service training. They have to undergo that every year, and this year, I've made it a pet peeve of mine to make them train additional, more than what's required by the state. It's part of my pursuit of excellence in making our police department one of the best in the country, not just the state. So if you see the officers and you start to see changes in them, that is why, because they're going to be undergoing additional training to make them better. And with that being said, that is my report for tonight, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Town Administrator?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update on the estimated billing and how we're making out with that, and I'm reading from a document here that we had compiled. The estimated billing lasted about a hundred and twenty days. For folks out there, it was about a hundred and twenty days, it was roughly thirteen hundred accounts. The total overestimating per day over the hundred and twenty-day period was seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six gallons per day. Now that's across, that's the total of all thirteen hundred accounts. So you divide that seven thousand dollar number by the thirteen hundred accounts, that comes out to about five point seven four gallons per day, that the estimates were high. Now when I give you that number, that is based upon the accounts that we know were estimated too high. It gets washed out by the accounts that we underestimated there, and when that all shakes out, the, when you look at the amount of money that the town typically brings in at a billing period of a month, it's about a hundred to a hundred and three thousand dollars. So even with the underestimating of nineteen thousand dollars, our total monies that came in, what the accurate bill was, was a hundred and five. It was about three thousand dollars more in total revenue coming in compared to the numbers that we had estimated over the four-month period. So my point is, it pretty much came out to be a wash. Now, that's, that's not meant to sound insensitive to people that have some unique situations that we are continuing to work with. Some of the situations that we're finding is if somebody moved into a house or bought a house that had been vacant, as you can appreciate, doing a twenty-four-month average of the, of the total utility bill to come up with the estimated average, let's say if the house had been sitting vacant for six months, it would have depressed that estimated number. So when people moved into the house over the four-month period and started using the, the normal amount of water, that's where we underestimated and they owed us more money because they were getting the benefit of a house that had been sitting vacant for a period of time. And we've got a small handful of people that fit that category. The other category that we're getting is that, this is over a hundred twenty-day period or over four billing cycles. So if somebody had a, a bill that they owed the town a hundred dollars more than what they normally do, you need to divide that by the four months. That comes out to what, twenty-five dollars when you break it down for the month's time? Twenty-five dollars is equal to about a thousand, maybe a thousand fifty gallons a month of usage, because we bill on thousand, thousand gallon increments, and so every thousand gallons, when you combine the sewer rate and the water rate, that comes out to about twenty-one, twenty-two dollars in total. So if you had a thousand gallon increase in your usage, that's costing you about twenty-two additional dollars. And when people are looking at that, they're grasping the idea, well, there's no way I used a thousand gallons more. If you divide a thousand gallons by thirty days, that only comes out to about thirty-three gallons a day more that you would have to use over a thirty-day period to have a thousand additional gallons of usage. And so when you look at that, that could be a shower, that could be a load of laundry, it could be a variety of things where you're accumulating an additional thirty, thirty-three gallons a day of usage. And when you look at the usage of our users, it is not uncommon to find thousand gallon fluctuations in water usage. That can be attributable to, it's summertime, the water in the grass, maybe they're washing their car. It can, it can really fluctuate over holiday seasons, July fourth, picnics, Thanksgiving, Christmas, family over. So it doesn't take a whole lot to trigger a thousand gallon fluctuation back and forth. But yet, at the same time, we are very sensitive to people wanting to make sure that this is accurate. So we've gone out and we have physically read, I'm going to say probably twenty-five to forty meters, I don't know the exact number, but anyone who has had it concerned, we've gone out and read the meter, and we found no anomalies between the actual reading on the meter and the, the computer-generated reading of the meter. So far, everything seems to be accurate in terms of the amount of water that people are using. But we're also, again, sensitive to the fact that some people, you know, a hundred dollar increase is something that they're getting hit with in one month's time, so we're working with them on payment plans, and we're letting people, you know, stretch those payments out three months, six months, whatever works for them, and we're not charging them late fees or anything like that. Your next bill, you should see that drop. So my point is, if somebody opened up their bill and it was a hundred dollars more this month, that doesn't mean that next month it's still going to be the same hundred dollars more. It's trying to, it's trying to catch up for four months of a depressed estimation based upon twenty-four months of history. So we, we've had some people say to us, "Well, where did you come up with that number, and how, how can you determine, how can you affirmatively say that that's what the number is?" All we can say is that's based upon the individual's readings over a twenty-four-month period. So again, we took the total, we took the average, we took the total of all the bills and, or the gallonage, actually, we took the total of all the gallonage over a twenty-four month period, divided that by twenty-four, came up what the average use was, multiplied that by the sewer and water charge, and then that's what people got as an estimated bill. So that, we found that to be the most accurate way of dealing with the fact that our system was not up and running during that time. So please reach out to us. We're here, emails, come in, stop in and see us, give us a call. We're more than happy to sit down and, and make sure that everything is accurate as possible for everyone. And the other thing I wanted to cover, with all of the frustration, the justifiable frustration that people are feeling, the town did not raise its water and sewer rate last year, nor has it done it yet for this year. We are still in the budget process. So there's, this groundswell thinking that the town raised sewer and water rates, and that's not the case. So I wanted to throw that out there also.
All right, we'll go into staff reports. In my report, I pretty much, Calvin pretty much covered everything for the water and sewer issue we've been having, and like I said, last week, we attended, unfortunately, the life celebration for Senator Norman. We've got a lot of things coming up with the weather getting ready to break. Fortunately, we didn't have any more water main breaks since the last one, and the past couple of snow and ice events haven't been too costly for us, so we're in pretty good shape there. So we'll move on to Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, I just want to say that with regard to planning and zoning, that we are close to completing the table of permissible uses for the zoning categories, and that we will be starting on the zoning ordinance, and that we're still meeting twice a month to accomplish the completion of all these documents. That's it.
Commissioner Pearson?
Over the past week, we have had a door-to-door vacuum salesman going around, okay? He did not, or they have not gotten a solicitation permit. So if they come to your door, ask them for their permit, and if they don't have one, please ask them to leave the area. We didn't, we got one or two calls right off the bat, but since it got out on social media that what they were doing, that has died down alone, so. Just a reminder, you cannot go door-to-door without a permit in the town. The second thing is more on a personal note, thank you, Calvin, thank you, Tom. My neighbor had a problem with sinkholes. One developed over the weekend, it's six to seven feet deep, and Tom from KCI, myself, Ron Thomas, and the resident were there at seven o'clock this morning in the snow, looking in that hole to make sure that it wasn't anything worse than what we thought it, or what Tom believes it is, and, you know. So thank you very much for coming out, and this goes to any resident. When you come across something like that that's unusual, please let the town know, because it may not only have an effect on the resident, but there could be some adjacent properties that could be affected by this. Now, in this particular case, folks, I'm very honest about it, I was the adjacent property, okay? And it's all gonna, it's all fine, so, you know, I'm not going to wake up tomorrow morning, hopefully, in my house, be in a sinkhole, but it, it, you have to understand the town will help you if you come across an unusual situation like that. And that's all I have.
I got to ask, what do you, what do you think may have caused it?
It appeared to be rubble from when they dug out the basement, and then pulled back into the backyard, and then covered over with dirt, and eventually that settlement took place, and you could see blocks of big stones on top of each other.
Some kind of...
It wasn't a natural formation we were looking at. We were looking at something that had been placed there and then covered over.
And anyone who lives in Summer Hill will know that that whole thing is nothing but stones. But again, thanks a lot, that just, it did nothing more than alleviate residents' concern that his house or property was not going to be disappearing. Again, thanks.
Commissioner Warnock?
Yep. First, I'd like to, you know, echo what Commissioner Arthur Reith said. You know, I, over the years, have become good friends with Wayne Norman. You know, just, yeah, whenever, it was funny, because Chief and I both experienced this on a few occasions, whenever you'd walk into the room, you know, you'd just yell your name across the room, and you're like, "I hear Wayne, I don't see, oh, there he is, back in the corner." I mean, it was amazing. He, it's almost like he did GPS tracking on, you know, on some people, you know, they knew well, and he just, he always made you feel like, like a friend. It was just, he was always jubilant, I don't ever remember the guy not smiling, I'll, I mean, just level of honesty and such, we had an MML meeting not that long ago, and the topic of highway user revenues came up, which is the money the town receives from the gas taxes. And back during some of the financial difficulties of oh-eight, oh-nine, twenty-ten, somewhere in that range, Governor O'Malley rated those highway user revenues to balance the budget, and the town has not, and for that matter, no town or municipality or county government or whatever, has seen that money restored. So one of the big pressing issues for the towns is seeing that money restored, because that's what we use to help pay for our street repairs and such. And, you know, it was brought up as a topic at the MML meeting, and Wayne stood up and in very Wayne fashion said, you know, "You people are nuts, that, you know, he says, we're not going to solve that problem in one or two sessions, it's going to take a little while." So I mean, it was just, it was one of those things where it's like, it may not be the answer you wanted to hear, but it was honest, and when he got done saying it, you didn't feel like, like, oh, you know, it was just like, okay, I can respect that, you know, it was just, just the way, you know, Wayne had about him, I mean, he said it with a smile, but it was just the honesty and the, I mean, I, you know, he's just a very unique character, and it's a, I mean, he was a titan in the Senate, and just, you know, I know I'm going to miss him terribly, and, you know, I think it's, and I look forward to, you know, his wife Linda's going to serve out the rest of his session, was announced today. She's a great person, I look forward to working with her, and, you know, I look forward to working with the people that ultimately, after elections, fill those seats for the House and the Senate, so. But yeah, we've had, we have, we're really lucky, we have a great team up here with Delegate Hornberger and Delegate Riley and Delegate Castlely for District Thirty-Five, and even District Thirty-four and Thirty-six reach out and help us with a lot of things. So we are going to District Thirty-six night later this month, they reached out to us to, to join us, to join them for their night, so it's, you know, it's, we have a lot of support in the House and the Senate, and we appreciate that, so. But I'm, back to town business. We've had, we're starting to have some movement in the parks. The Ecotone project that we nearly completed last year until the weather decided not to cooperate, we had received word from Ecotone that they would be in tomorrow to complete it. I suggested he might want to put his hip waders on and check it out before he commits to that, and he went today and, and said that he would come back when it dries out. So as anybody that's been to Veterans Park recently knows, it might be actually easier just to put in a pond than, than get that swale fixed, but it's quite an extensive amount of water sitting in it right now, so when it drains out, dries out, or whatever, whatever it may take in order to dry it out enough for them to complete it, they want to come back and, and do the final grade and be done with it in a day or two, so it has to be fairly dry for them to do that. Once that's completed, we're looking at a number of projects to kick off. This spring in the park, we'll be looking at some walking improvements, some of the sidewalks, we're looking at dealing with some of the drainage issues, especially over this winter, the ground, every winter, it seems like the ground swells up around the playground, and it seems like every winter, the sidewalk gets a little lower and the ground gets a little higher, and this year, we're about, there's probably about six inches of water been sitting on the sidewalk for the last two or three months approaching the playground. So what we're looking at is some drainage improvements, that sidewalk, we'll probably tear out about three or four sections of it, put some piping underneath of it, and raise the sidewalk up probably about six to eight inches, so that'll help with the drainage problems on that. We're looking at some grading near the sidewalk to the pavilion to allow that to drain better, and then we're looking at some other, I would say pedestrian-type improvements within the park, to get from the paved surface over to the basketball courts without trekking through the mud, so that'll probably be like a crusher-run trail, and, and some bridges and things like that to, we'll be getting started on, hopefully, as soon as they get that grading done. We had a good, the cabin fever, had good turnout for that. Had a lot of conversations with people regarding the plans for Rails to Trails and other projects in the park. On that note, we're working with the county to try and finalize the, the sections we need to get that started, and hopefully, we'll, you know, we're still planning on getting something done with that this summer. And then finally, I have a, NLX Fitness has reached out, and they want to do fitness in the park, or I'm sorry, workout in the park is what it's going to be called, workout in the park, with, there'll be a fee associated with it, you know, I don't, I don't believe you have to be a member of NLX, I'll have to double-check that, it shouldn't be that way. I think it's just a fee, but twenty-five percent of the profits from that will be donated back, or proceeds or whatever, will be donated back to the town for Rails to Trails. So it's something we're going to use as our, you know, because we, typically with any kind of grant funding or anything like that, especially like Rails to Trails and such, there typically has to be some either cash or in-kind contribution by local municipality, so, you know, we've been tracking hours, volunteer hours, we can use that for in-kind, but also any, any private... private funds or anything. The goal is not to, you know, hit the taxpayers, uh, for that project. Well, let me rephrase that, because ultimately, I guess Rails to Trails funding comes from taxpayers, but not to hit the town's, uh, taxpayers in the way of local taxes. The goal is to use grant funding that, that's already allocated anyway, and just, you know, pull that, those taxes we're paying into the state and federal government, bring them back to the town of Rising Sun to make improvements, so. Um, and that is my report. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, back on to Commissioner, uh, I mean, to Senator Norman, he was a great, uh, fan of railroads and the Rails to Trails program, and I think it'd be good if we, when we get to that point, we, we start recognizing some of our past memberships and, and people that have been part of these boards, that it'd be good to put his name on a plaque and sort of the dedication, some of the sections of that, uh, Rails to Trails program. So we've got a, a lot of things coming up. Um, we have a planning commission workshop, Monday, March nineteenth, six-thirty P. M. Uh, we're starting our budget meetings, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year budget prep meeting. Our first one is Tuesday, March the twentieth at six P. M. here in Town Hall. Uh, our next town meeting, March twenty-seventh, seven P. M. Uh, Planning Commission Comp Plan Open House, Monday, April second, two thousand eighteen. Pauline, do you have a time for that, Susie?
Oh, I think we were thinking about an hour and a half, like six-thirty to eight, but we'll firm that up on Monday.
Okay. Um, yeah, 'cause you have a couple of those on the list, another one for Monday, April sixteenth, so the time to be determined.
We'll be seeing for both of them. We'll determine that on Monday.
Uh, another budget prep meeting, Tuesday, April third. Town meeting, Tuesday, April tenth. Uh, and then also in our upcoming events, uh, we have the Little League Baseball Parade on April seventh, and then the Tiger Trot Five K on Saturday, April twenty-first, and some upcoming holidays. Town Hall will be closed on Good Friday, March the thirtieth.
For a couple upcoming events, um, the project clean stream cleanup in, it should be Veterans, I think it's Veteran Park this year, will be on, uh, Saturday, April twenty-eighth. We tried to avoid conflicting with Tiger Trot this year, and that's, uh, nine to twelve. I'll have more information on that. And then Sun Fest is, uh, June second, I believe. We've been having the Sun Fest meetings. The first, it's the first Saturday in June.
Be here before we know it. So, Pauline, anything else? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn? We are going to adjourn to an executive session, so we won't be calling for a vote for adjournment tonight. So we'll be moving downstairs to an executive session to discuss personnel and legal advice. I think we're all done tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.